and Organization Meeting of the Gasson County Board of Commissioners. My name is Chad Brown. I serve as Chairman of the Board as well as the Commissioner for the Riverbend Township. I would like to welcome our viewers from Spectrum Cable and AT&amp;T for making it possible for our citizens. For our television audience and live streaming audience, I would like to present you, your Gasson County Commissioner, presenting on my far right.
Alan Frayley, Sherman Township.
Good afternoon, Ronnie Worley, South Point Township.
Good afternoon, Kathy Cloninger, Dallas Township.
Kim Johnson, Gastonia Township.
Bob Hovis, Crowthers Mountain Township.
Good afternoon, Tom Keeger, Gastonia Township.
At this time, I would wish you to rise for the invocation given by Commissioner Cloniger, or excuse me, the Pledge of Allegiance given by Commissioner Cloniger and the invocation given by Commissioner Hovis.
Could you please stand? A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
You can remain standing for the prayer, please. Thank you. Gracious Fathers, we come to do the county's work. We're all cognizant of the season that we're in. Father, give us the knowledge and the wisdom to understand the work that we do for the county, to recognize those who are in need, to try to be a bigger and better county, to reach out and touch individuals in our everyday lives as many of our citizens already do. Father, continue to bless us and bless the citizens of this county. We ask that in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Why did we switch them around? We always pray first and then. Just letting everyone know, I'm going to change the organizational board tonight, what we're doing. We're going to start with the regular session and go to the organizational meeting and then the combined meeting, since we have to do all the regular meeting to stop all work for that before we do the organizational meeting. If there's no objections from the board, I'll go ahead and move forward with the work session and we will start on that with the regular meeting. I will now call the December regular meeting to order. First item is approval of the business agenda, any revisions or business agenda items that need to be pulled at this time.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Frayley. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Were there any objections to the board? I would request a move from the citizens' recognition to the work session. Seeing none, do I hear a motion to approve the business agenda as amended with items with nothing pulled tonight? Do I hear a motion to approve the business agenda?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Approval of the amendments. You were provided with the draft of the minutes for the regular meeting on 10/24, rescheduled regular meeting of 11/28 and the closed session of 11/28. Are there any revisions to this minutes? Seeing none, do I hear a motion to approve? Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Worley. Any comments? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Approval of the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda with no items pulled?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Frayley, seconded by Commissioner Hovis. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Non-consent agenda, the first item on the agenda is the appointment of Mr. John D. Joy to the county attorney effective January 29, 2024, upon the commencement of his employment.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Hovis.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Worley. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. The next is to appoint the deputy clerk, Ms. Courtney C. Rogers, to the position of interim county attorney to begin on January 1, 2024 through January 28, or said time before that of 2024, or until the permanent county attorney's employment commences.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. No items were pulled from the agenda, appointments. Commissioner Frayley.
None, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Worley.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have several, so we will. Economic Development Commission, a reappointment requested by Richard Cromlich, representing the South Point Township. Environmental Review Advisory Board, a reappointment for Zach Horn. Sarah Local Planning, have an application and to make a motion for Mr. Robert Jackson and also Sarah Local Planning, representing radio and TV from Diane Turbophile, and I'll make all those into a motion.
Seconded by Commissioner Frayley. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Mr. Cloniger.
I have, I would like to appoint Harold Hall to the Gasson County Board of Adjustment, also Yolanda Hall Miller to the Regional Staff Aging Advisory Committee, to the Council on Aging Home and Community, as well as the Care Block Grant Advisory Committee.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Hovis. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Mr. Johnson.
No appointments at this time.
Mr. Hovis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have two, a reappointment for myself to the Environmental Review Advisory Board as the Board's liaison, and the Sarah Local Planning Committee, reappointment's been requested by Mr. Mark Lampier.
Seconded by Commissioner Frayley. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Mr., welcome back, Commissioner Keeger.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
We're missed.
I've got two to the Sarah Local Planning Committee, reappointment of Alexa Hodge and Michael Nance, oh, a third one also, Hoyle Withers. And then to the EDC, Dr. John Hooser of the College, and Joe Davis to the Caramount Board.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Hovis. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. I have one to the Caramount Health Board, reappointment for Mr. Frank Stewart.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Keeger. All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. I have a few full board appointments to go through as well. The first one to the Caramount Health Board, reappointment requested by Commissioner Hovis.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Worley. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Congratulations. The Fireman Relief Fund, five appointments as indicated on the attached, all can be made in one single motion, and that is for Mr. Klein Craft, Clint Craft, Harold Fulbright, Virgil Harper, Jimmy Johnson, and Mike Ryan.
Motion or second, whichever.
Seconded by Commissioner Hovis. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. The next one will be the Moncross Chamber, reappointment requested by Commissioner Worley. Is that okay with you, Mr. Worley?
Yep.
Seconded by Commissioner Frayley. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. The next one is Equalization and Review Board, reappointment requested by Mr. Alan Beatty.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Hovis. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Next one is Equalization Review Board, Mr. James Julian, reappointment requested for the alternate position.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Hovis. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Equalization Review Board application received from Mr. Randy Boyd for the alternate position. Seconded by Commissioner Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Equalization Review Board for the at-large position, at-large appointment requested by Mr. Maureen O'Keefe has shifted from the alternate position.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Hovis. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Last one for the Equalization Review Board application received for Ms. Leslie Dale as the alternate position. Seconded by Commissioner Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Reports. Mr. Frayley.
None.
Mr. Worley.
No report.
Mr. Cloniger.
No reports.
Mr. Johnson.
No reports at this time.
Mr. Hovis.
None as well, sir.
Mr. Keeger.
Not really a report, but I would like to take the opportunity just to say thank you to probably close to a couple thousand people that reached out in all types of manners, emails, texts, phone calls, cards, you name it. Been a little bit of a rough road, but everything's getting back to normal, and I just wanted to thank the community in general, especially the folks up here for their thoughts, especially the prayers. They meant something, and I think they helped do something, but thank you.
We're glad to have you back, sir. I'll go back through mine later on as we get to it. Managers' report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I provided a written update on the cold weather shelter. You have it there at your seat. I will not go through this point by point, but just wanted you all to know that we've already been in operation eight times this year and are getting more activity than previously. I'll keep you updated on the status. That's all I have. Thank you.
Esquire Stetzer, your last report, sir. You've got to have something.
Mr. Chairman, my last report is just this. I've met with the now interim county attorney, Ms. Rogers, and the incoming attorney, Mr. Joy, to go over the current matters in Gaston County. I believe all those matters are poised for a smooth transition. That's the full report, and I'll end with my thanks for your trust in allowing me to serve as county attorney for two years. It's been a privilege. Thank you.
We will get back to you in the last part of the meeting, but I did want to thank you for the handwritten gesture to come to your swearing in. Any other matters need to come before the board at this time?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
If I could briefly, and I've talked with the county manager regarding one of the editorials in this past Sunday's local paper written by a fine gentleman by the name of Duane Burke, which I think we all know, Duane, and it took me, took me aback just a little bit. Everything in it was pretty much negative towards the county and local cities in the area, and none of the good things were mentioned. And I talked to the manager about those, and she supplied me with some information, and I did inform, and I think, I think I copied the board on it, that, you know, it's something that you just can't snap your finger and fix overnight, and to be honest, the, I mean, everything, every municipality in Gaston is the county, but the problems lie actually within the cities, those that border I-85 in particular. But I just want to see if we're doing in a speedy fashion, as speedy as we can be, if we're still working on these procedures and the goals, and are we achieving what we set out to do? Because he had some valid points, but, you know, he just forgot a few things, but I guess I'd ask the manager just to comment on it.
I want to speak with you, Thompson, and then we can get her comments, if that's okay with you. What I wanted to say was, I too saw the lengthy issue in the paper, which he had, and some of the problems that we've had is, you know, we tried to do what we can, and it seems like every time the county is called upon to solve everybody's issue when it comes to these. In 2018 and 19, the county began its work to create a community-wide strategic vision to help shape the community would continue to grow and thrive. These efforts led to a creation of One Gaston 2040 Vision. It is through the process of creating this vision that the results of the created a countywide homeless task force that the county started. The task force report recommended the creation of a homeless prevention committee made up of representatives from across the county. The community met monthly for two years, working to coordinate with our household communities and different things of the unhoused. We coordinated efforts to result the creation of a cold weather shelter, $1 million in the county put into ARPA funds to reduce the harm felt by the homeless community, shower and laundry facilities that we also did. The county has been a leader in coordinating the community-focused response to help those most needed within our community and continues to do so as we go forward to accomplish our goals throughout the county. This is still work to be done of the unhoused population, but I will say, I drew ire to that as well, because I know the effort that this board and this county has put forth to help provide some of the things, but we're not going to be sitting here saying that we're not doing anything by someone who wants us to be able to do everything. So if they want to jump in and they want to help, we've given solutions to this, and I'm tired of being someone's whipping boy when we're sitting here giving every effort we can. I'll ask the manager to chime in if you want.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The homelessness task force that the chairman mentioned has been meeting monthly for the last two years to try to forward this work, and structurally inside the county, we have created the Community Services Group that Dr. Greg, excuse me, Greer leads. Dr. Greg, excuse me, Greer leads, and are working very diligently on this effort. I will say that it's not just a county responsibility, and that is part of the challenge in terms of moving speedily. We're working with the city, we're working with the Salvation Army, we're working with all of the partners to try to move this forward. So with that being said, it is a piece of the county strategic plan. It is a part of the 2040 Vision, and I will be happy to bring back a more detailed report on the steps that the homelessness task force is working through, but that's the overview.
But I also want to thank you, Tom, for sending that email back to them because those things need to be said to those people and what's going on. This concludes our regular meeting. The organizational meeting will convene immediately. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Mr. Johnson. All in favor?
Organizational meeting of the Board of Commissioners will now come to order. Our first order of business is for nominations for Chairman of the Board. Are there nominations from the Board?
I'd like to nominate Chairman Brown, Commissioner Chad Brown, the繼續的Chair.
Are there further nominations? We have a motion and a second for Chad Brown to serve as chairperson. I declare nominations closed. The move to a vote. All in favor? Congratulations, Chairman Brown.
All right. Thank you again. Our next order of business is to nominate the Vice Chairman of the Board. Are there any nominations from the Board at this time or to the Vice Chairman?
I'll make a nomination for Bob Hovis, Commissioner Hovis, to remain as the Vice Chair.
Motion made by Commissioner Worley, seconded by Commissioner Fraley. Are there any other nominations at this time? Seeing none, I will declare the nominations closed. We'll move to the vote. The vote is in order to the nomination made by Commissioner Worley, seconded by Commissioner Fraley for Mr. Bob Hovis for Vice Chair. All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Congratulations. All right. The next order of business is appointments, which we've already, we've already gone through that whole session, but we'll have to make sure we get the ones for the, for the full Board. The first appointment is for Dr. Kim S. Eagle for the position of County Manager. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Fraley. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Next motion is Ms. Donna S. Buff for the position of County Clerk. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Commissioner Worley, seconded by Commissioner Hovis. Any discussion? All in favor? Congratulations, ladies. I'm hoping you'll do a better job than you did last year. That is a joke, because, trust me, they, they're the only reason why we get to sit up here and do the real thing. The next business is resolutions. Do I hear a motion for resolutions of meetings?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Johnson. All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. The next resolution for approval of the bonds.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Johnson. All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. The resolution of meetings for the legislative delegation.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Johnson, seconded by Commissioner Fraley. All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. The next one is resolution of the annual planning session coming up very soon.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Johnson. All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Just for the simple pleasures, I've afforded the opportunity to speak right now, but Donna didn't want me to talk tonight, so we'll let it go. I'm kidding. This concludes our organizational meeting. The work session will convene immediately. Thank you for watching. The December work session is now called to order. Proclamations, commendations, and certificates of awards. The first part of this meeting will go as a, is with great pleasure for the Gaston County Commission to honor citizens who have given unselfishly, given of their time, talent, skills, energies, and services as an appointee to one of the following boards as commissioners. The type of service in the foundation for citizen involvement is the county government, is to helping shape the future of our community. We greatly acknowledge the work of the following individuals, and certificates of appreciation have been forwarded to them. Ms. Ann Pearson, Amy Pearson, excuse me, Gaston County Board of Adjustments, David Fogarty, Ken Lemon, Sarah Local Planning. The next item on the agenda is presentations. Legislative update will come from Senator Brad Overcash, Representative John A. Torbit. Fine people of our community, and thank you for what you do, but we'll now ask you to take your presentation forward. Gentlemen.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Can I just remind them that they have 15 minutes? That's what it says on the agenda.
I don't, I don't think we'll burden you that long, Mr. Commissioner.
Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Chairman, thank you all very much for asking us, having us here. It's an honor and privilege to be in front of you, and especially, Mr. Keger, it's wonderful to see you back, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm John Torbit. I service the North Carolina House Representative for District 108, which is northeastern quadrant of Gaston County down into Gastonia.
And I'm Brad Overcash. I serve Gaston County in the State Senate.
We thought it'd be best if we took on your little, just a little trip, a little story to tell you where we came from, to tell you exactly where we, how we got here. Ladies and gentlemen, 2011, I went to Raleigh my first term and was welcomed by a $2 billion actual, real budget deficit, a $2 billion fee owed to the federal government deficit, and a structural deficit of another $2 billion if we did nothing. So basically, the first day before we could put the key in the door, we were looking at a $6 billion debt. All this while we were clamoring to cut taxes on our citizens. It seemed like the impossible. We sat down and defined a mathematical formula to build in triggers for revenue. As revenue come in, we could reduce taxes, a formula. So we just didn't go ho-haw, cutting taxes and hurting the state economically. That has worked well for 11, what, how many years? 13 years now, and going on 14. The plan is in foot, and as you know, the economy has turned. Our jobs are back online. We have invested in such things as J Dig, which is very interested to the county when it comes to economic development growth. That program is again fully funded. North Carolina One Fund is again fully funded, as well as additional dollars to expand the use of our mega sites. North Carolina is doing so well, we're outgrowing all of our mega sites. As you know, we have a battery, EV battery plant being built. We have a new car plant being built, and one of my little personal favorites, we have the next supersonic transport, an airline that will take you faster than the speed of signs, speed of sound, similar to the Concorde. It's being built right here in your North Carolina. It's something to crow about, and we try to do that every day. And our plans are to continue that path, and Senator Overcash is going to go tell you some of the wonderful things that we've got done over the last several years.
Thank you, Representative Torbit. Ladies and gentlemen, as far as Gaston County is concerned, this is by far the best budget for appropriations in our county's history. In this budget, appropriations for Gaston County projects total approximately $180 million, which is more than double any amount of appropriations that Gaston County has received in a state budget in the history of our state and the history of our county. And we're going to walk through some of the, some of the specifics, but a couple of the, a couple of the high points we'll, we'll mention to you specifically related to Gaston County. $80 million in water and sewer projects for this county, including your top legislative priority for us, the $10 million Riverbend Preserve Extension is a part of that $80 million in appropriations coming back. $60 million program to Gaston College that I am told by our healthcare experts is going, and our education experts, is going to solve the nursing crisis in our area. It is a regional health sciences facility, and at an unprecedented amount of $60 million. The Veterans Treatment Court, which is a priority of this Board, $460,000 to do that. We're also, which hits, hits home to the meeting today, have a couple of new Superior Court judgeships. So one, recurring funds for Gaston to go from two to three resident Superior Court judges. In addition to that, this budget created 10 different special Superior Court judgeships across this state, and your county attorney, Bill Stetser, is going to be, have his investiture on January the 5th. He's going to be chambered here in Gaston as a special Superior Court judge. So what that's done is we've gone in Gaston County from two Superior Court judges to four Superior Court judges chambered in our county. And, and I think Representative Torbit's going to take us through some more of the specific projects. John?
Thanks. How does this directly impact our citizens? Everyone would, I guess, want to know that question, right? That's what our job is. When we first went to Raleigh in 2011, the personal income tax, I think, knocked on seven, it's a door, somewhere in the seven, I don't remember exactly, but today it's 3.49, and if revenue continues as we project it will, it will be 2.99 next session. And our goal is zero personal income tax for the citizens of North Carolina, and we are well on our way, and just short of a decade. Along with that, corporate income tax has been reduced. We are beginning to work on franchise reduction taxes, so our businesses, both small, medium, and large, can all effectively grow. And on top of that, we have more than $5 billion in what we call the rainy day fund. Now, one may think that's where a storm or tornado or hurricanes that are impacted North Carolina regularly these days. That is true, but it's also there for an economic rainy day. So we are poised, this state poised well for the citizens of North Carolina in case we have a ballooning inflation go to the, to areas that we were not expecting. So we have banked dollars to help us during that time to carry us for several years should that impact us negatively. So we're doing the best we can to best prepare for the future for the citizens of North Carolina while reducing their out-of-pocket debt to the state each and every day we're working in Raleigh. And with that, Senator, unless you have any further remarks, we'll stand for any questions.
Yeah, I would just say, and I'm sure Representative Torbit agrees with me, this Board is extremely easy to work with, and I think our partnership with the delegation in this Board is very much appreciated. We hear regularly from every single member of the Board. Your chairman does a great job of keeping us up on what counties, what the county commission's priorities are, and I just really appreciate the visits to Raleigh, the calls, and just the teamwork that this Board and our delegation has had. And you have an excellent representative in Debbie Clary who keeps us up with the day-to-day in Raleigh as well. So we just really appreciate the great teamwork there, and we will stand for questions.
Wanted to open up to the Board for any questions at this time. Commissioner Fraley.
Not really a question, but I just wanted to thank you guys for your service and just really appreciate it. The appropriations was just awesome. I mean, I mean, what you guys were able to do for Gaston County, we just really appreciate it. And anytime we can help on our end, don't hesitate to call us either. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Commissioner. After 20 years, it's been a long time coming. We, we hope we can help restabilize Gaston County as the leading county in North Carolina.
Awesome. Thank you, guys.
Mr. Worley.
Thank you. Senator, Representative, I, again, I echo Representative, or Commissioner Fraley's remarks. I want to thank you personally for, for everything that you've done for Gaston County. I think if, if you were to talk to a citizen of Gaston County, which a lot of them here, and you and I, all of us are, are citizens, one of the big things that everybody's going to say is transportation, transportation. And we spoke about, you spoke about a lot of great things that's happening, but I still think transportation continues to be an issue. And if you want to go into a little bit of that, and, and I know some of it, but I'm bringing this out just as a representative of the citizens to talk about transportation and where some of those dollars are going to be going.
Sir, real quick, it was an honor and privilege to work in transportation for over a decade in the state of North Carolina, and to change the, the way we did things. Before, sometimes people in powerful positions could pick up the phone and have a road built named after them months down the road. That no longer happens in North Carolina. We developed a mathematical formula and put that in place, which defines based on a lot of add-ons such as, you know, road congestion and population, that to grade each road, and then however many available funds we had matched, however many programs we could do. But specifically addressing locally, $45 million was added to the budget to address the spaghetti junction on I-85, 485, where it is backed up literally each and every day, as well as trying what we can to get the I-85 widening and the two new bridges across the river done post haste. So we directly wanted to look at that spaghetti junction, because as you know, every one of y'all have driven on that. There is not a good day to be on that road. So we're going to try to make that correction.
I appreciate you explaining that. Thank you, Representative.
Gentlemen, I have three words. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Gaston County certainly is blessed with the funding that you've pushed back from the citizens of North Carolina to Gaston County. We will certainly continue to highlight items where you could help us with that in the future, and I would hope that the transportation conversation that Mr. Worley just had could be expanded upon to understand other opportunities outside the box of the way we currently look at those, like taking some local dollars and letting us help fund some of those in conjunction with the state to move priority projects up for Gaston County. Thank you.
Commissioner, just to let you know, we have thrown the box away. There is no longer a box. So we are looking to be both efficient, effective, and expeditious in both transportation work as well as the tax offsets we have for the citizens of North Carolina.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Cloninger.
My thoughts echo the others, but I also want to thank you for being a great team and working together and making a difference from Gaston County and bringing back those dollars which are so well needed. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I will say, and I appreciate you mentioning that, you know, we, we started this, this term having regular meetings of our delegation. It just made sense. We all work together on these appropriations processes, and it really, it really helped working together as a team.
And Brad and I are in front of you today, but it's not, also with the, with the help and the due diligence of Representative Donnie Loftus, which serves the southern portion of Gaston County and into Gastonia, and Kelly Hastings to the west that has a portion of Gaston County as well as some of Cleveland County. So it takes all of us, as well as Senator Tim Alexander, who, who claims that the great city of Cherryville as in being his senate district. So it is a teamwork, and as Brad said, we have been meeting regularly. We made a, made a, I guess, a, an agreement that whatever projects we, we had going forward in the budget, that we would all collectively sign off and support everyone's projects. And that's exactly what we did, and personally, I feel that that had led to some of the success that we had in this year's budget.
Mr. Keger.
Yeah, very briefly, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the college funding again. What that's going to do, not just for the college, but for the, the whole area, the region, many, many counties, it's going to, it's going to be a venue for men and women to attend a first-class nursing program, which I think twice in the last four years, their nursing program has been ranked number one in the state. That's not just out of community colleges, that's nursing programs. So on behalf of the, the Board, the faculty, the students, the president, I have to say thank you. And I'd ask you, both in your own chambers while you're up speaking to your cohorts up there, if you would give them a big thanks from this Board and from Gaston College.
Thank you for that. We'll, we'll pass that along. I appreciate that. Appreciate your service on the Gaston College Board, too. I enjoyed serving with you when we were doing that.
Well, I wanted to, go ahead.
I'd like to close on a high note. Also, I'm not saving the best for last, but probably is. Gaston County is on the verge of having a world-class performing arts center that will be here in Gaston County, out surpassing what might be in Mecklenburg, so we can bring, I guess, the arts, performing arts here to Gaston County. With the thanks, with working with the Abbey on that as well. So we're thrilled to have that going into place as well.
I wanted to say thank you to both of you and your other colleagues. I want to say thank you to Debbie Clary, who's our legislative liaison to talk with you guys on our behalf of what's going on. But I want to say thank you for being open, not just for here in Gaston from the spectacular mountains all the way to the ocean. We do things and make sure that you guys understand where our thoughts are, and you, you guys are spot on. You're always there for us. You're always thinking about Gaston County, and with $180 million, how could we ever, you know, turn around and say, hey, you guys, can you do more? So we're going to ask you from this Board, we need you to do more. It's only appropriate that we do that, but we want to say thank you. You guys have worked your tails off. Brad, your first year, I mean, what more could you ask for from somebody what you've done? And John, your continued success, and Vidia, thank you for keeping him in line. But we understand that there's a difficult job, and there's a lot of people up there that you have to get your hands in, and you guys are the best of the best. So tell your other colleagues from Gaston that we're very appreciative, and tell the Speaker that we're appreciative for what's happened, but also that you guys making sure that we, the biggest process, I'll never forget when I came to you guys, I said, hey, that we, the biggest process, I'll never forget when I came to you guys, I said, hey, I got to have one thing. This is all we want, really, and we got a lot more, so thank you for the fight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and we will throw the shovels back in the truck and are eager to get back to work. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. I'd be remiss if I didn't, I didn't mention something. I just, Mr. Keger is going on his 26th year, starting today. So congratulations. I know it's been a lot of work, especially when you first got on the board. I think it's got a lot easier as we've gone along, maybe, hopefully, but a lot of things have happened since then. But I wanted to end our, before we end it tonight, I want to talk about our county attorney. Bill came to us, as you know, we talked about it last time, from the Attorney General's Office in Charlotte. Bill, I want to say thank you. I want to say thank you for taking a role that you were unfamiliar with. You delved in, you dived in really quick to say, I'm going to help, I'm going to do things, and we were very appreciative. This board is very appreciative for your service, but also appreciative for your attentiveness to what happens when seven individuals get into a room and want to yell at you for things that we all want. I know it's a difficult decision to make to go somewhere where you get to just raise, you know, tell people what they're doing now, you don't have to worry about answering to seven people, but I want to say thank you. I want to say thank you for giving it, the effort that you've given in the last two years. I've never seen anybody, I don't want to say the word, but you come a long way in government and that ability, but that's because of who you are. That's because of your work ethic and what you put into it. I want to thank you from Dr. Eagle and Donna for the things that you did for them, but anybody on this board, I'll give you open. Mr. Fraley?
Going to miss you, Bill. Been a pleasure getting to know you and work with you and the professionalism that you have brought to this job and we just, we're going to miss you and I know you're still going to be around Gaston County, that's a good thing, and Godspeed.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Worley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, Judge Stetser, I've certainly had a lot of concerns about you when we first started this, but you eased all those concerns and you stepped right in and you just did a tremendous job for us and I appreciate you. Wish you all the best, wish you and your family a Merry Christmas and a great New Year. I look forward to being there on the 5th, here in this room, it will be here, and if I ever stand before you, please have mercy on me, so. But I, but I hope not to see you in that capacity, but God bless. Thank you.
Mr. Claudia?
Bill, I've known you for a long, long time and you're a phenomenal person and a friend, and I wish you all the very, very best and thank you for always having our back and being there for us and never having to worry about that as we make decisions for the county, but I'm so excited for your new chapter and I hope you have a very Merry Christmas and you know where we are, so you stay in touch. We're not, we hope not to be in your courtroom, but thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
Well, thank you, Bill. I mean, I've worked with you a long time, dealing with a lot of inmates on the federal side and the state side, so we hate to see you go, but we know it's a great place you're going in. You're going to do great for the county to have another Superior Court Judge, so thank you for what you've done for us.
Mr. Keger?
I'm not even going to look at him. I'm still mad at him for leaving. I kind of hope they substitute him out in Birdie County and Murphy and he's got to travel all over the place, so there.
Bill, thank you and it's been a good ride. I think the friendships that you did were more justice than what we were doing here, but very proud of you. We look forward to seeing you now. You did promise that you would come to every meeting, so we'll see that happening, but you'll be missing and we will know where you're at, so if we need something, Courtney will make sure she takes care of us until. I want to introduce John Joy. John, if you'll come up to the podium and John will be taking over as soon as his work issues are taken care of, but right now, we're in Ms. Courtney Rogers' hands as of January 1st or December 31st, one of those days. Ms. Courtney will be taking over his interim until John, but I want to introduce everyone to John Joy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It is an honor to be appointed as your county attorney and let me say that Gaston County has been home since I was a small child. I have went out to other parts of North Carolina. It's good to be coming back home and it is so good to see that through this commission's leadership in installing Dr. Eagle as manager and bringing in Bill as the county attorney, you have a strong and good staff that is taking Gaston in the right direction and I am looking forward to being part of that.
Welcome, sir. I also want to recognize the police chief is here, Steven Zill. Also, I register a D's, Ms. Susan Lockridge is in attendance tonight and the tax collector, I saw her back there, oh, Ms. Chelsea Tarbush is back there, Dr. Greg Greer over at the, along with all the cast of many thousands that we have, the Bopsy Twins right here. That's the two right there that I, I love what they do for our county and our community because these two right here, Vincent and Matt, make it happen when Dr. Eagle puts the hammer down. They know that they better start working harder, so. But thank you to all the employees, thank you to everyone from Gaston County. I want to wish you a Merry Christmas and a most prosperous New Year, but as we give thanks to what's happening this Christmas, think about the people who are with you, think about the baby in the manger and the way a child was born unto us. I want to let you know that this concludes our meeting for today. Our next work session will be January the 9th, 2024, 6:00 p.m., here in the Harlebe Gaston Public Junior Forum Courthouse. Thank you for watching. If you have any questions, please telephone our clerk, Donna S. Buffett, 704-866-3196. Merry Christmas, everyone in Gaston County and our Legislative General Assembly members.